I can say.
We'll proceed to roll call.
Are you ready for roll call? Wonderful. Student trustee Massand.
Here.
Student trustee Vasquez.
Here.
Trustee Withrow. Not here. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese.
She's not here yet. She will be a little later.
Okay.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen.
He's here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Here.
Trustee Quinlan.
Here.
Trustee Johannes.
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk. Madam President, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. So I've asked trustee Johannes to read the affirmation of the statement of cooperation.
All right. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in the community college leadership and lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda item, but in summary, we have committed to, one, build trust and seek understanding to understand each other. Two, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols. And three, model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action.
Thank you, trustee Johannes. So now we're at 3.5 report of action taken in closed session.
There was no action taken.
Thank you, Vice President Quinlan. All right, so we'll move to item 3.6, approval of the agenda. Move approval.
Second. Sorry, who moved?
Trustee Delphine Polk.
That was trustee Gonzalez Ewen who seconded. Thank you. Student trustee Massand.
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow is not here. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese is not here. Trustee Gonzalez Ewen. Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
And that was a yes, by the way.
Okay, we'll move to approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. I, trustee.
Got that? Student trustee Massand.
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow is not here. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese is not here. Trustee Gonzalez Ewen.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
And trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
The minutes have passed.
Thank you. So we'll move to 3.8, Associated Student Government. Can't talk. Associated Student Government reports. Are there any presenters with us? I think I see Natai Myers.
Yes. Hello. Good evening to everyone. Good evening to the board and trustees. Just to give you a little heads up of what's going on at College of Alameda. We have, today, we had our Tasty Tuesday, which we celebrated with the students with Lunar New Year. So we were able to get some working cookies and give those out to everyone there. We are also in our Black History Month, where we'll be celebrating black art on Thursday from 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And we are getting ready for March, which is Women Heritage Month, and getting ready to celebrate all the great women that we have throughout Peralta and throughout the world. And at the moment, we are still the third weekend going strong and looking forward to having more students with the late start classes that have started as of Monday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Myers. Is there anybody here from BCC or Laney?
Oh, yes. Hi. I'm the president of Laney College. And just an update, I want to buy you everyone. Laney is going to offer the Valentine's Day at the Quad, 11:30. Also, ASOC is working on the Black History Month. We're gonna offer pizza and games at the Quad, also with a helpful BSU. Thanks to the Strong Living Campus Club, we are making the Lunar Year. Also, Laney has two more clubs, the Data Science Club, where it's a space where students can work on their portfolio. And the Architecture Club, there is like space where people, architecture students can do their homework all together. Also, ASOC is working on make the first club rush of the semester. And for the Women's Day, we are planning to make a self-defense class at the Quad. And we are planning, we're working on the V-Lite Coding 2024, who is basically a hackathon for students on the field of computer science. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the president of BCC?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those reports. So next we'll move to 3.9, Peralta Classified Senate Report. President Roberto Gonzalez.
He is online via Zoom.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Chancellor Gilkerson, Peralta students, colleagues, and community members. I'm actually hearing echo in my ear, so I don't think that that's not affecting you guys over there. And I'll try to ignore it my whole. I will begin with three, more or less brief campus reports from our respective classified senate. First, from Senate President Louis Martures of College of Alameda. See you, way welcome Chancellor Gilkerson to campus for our first meeting. It was a listening session with the chancellor. And see you, way plans to host and invite the chancellor back for another listening meetup session with the classified senate. Next, from President Hope Lane of Laney College. Congratulations to Ms. Arlene Lontac, who has accepted a new position at the district office as an executive assistant in human resources, which apparently is on tonight's for approval. Arlene has been at Laney for over 10 years and has supported Laney Classified Senate in various roles. Senate President Lane characterizes Ms. Lontac as the glue that keeps Laney together for, for and at all levels. On behalf of Laney's Classified Senate President, Lane wishes to thank Arlene for her positive attitude and bringing her best self to work each day. Wish you success on your next journey, Lane. Next, Laney College Classified Senate will hold one of two listening sessions with Chancellor Gilkerson on Monday, February 26th and Wednesday, March 7th. They look forward to the party conversations and also sharing their concerns with the chancellor. The Classified Leadership Committee of 2004 Conference will open its registration on Wednesday, February 14th. This is a great conference network with other classified professionals in the state. President Lane also thanks everyone who tuned in on Friday, February 9th to the webinar, Cracking the Code: Navigating Campus Politics for Classified Professionals. We're hoping that this webinar was recorded so that the link can be shared out to those who are unable to. And lastly, President Lane, I'd like to close out by urging us all to please get involved, to listen to each other, and have the best possible mutual respect for everyone. And now Senate President Tom Risa of Berkeley City College reports that the Ad-Hoc Committee on Professional Development for Classified is actively promoting staff to apply for IEPI individualized funding to attend conferences, workshops, trainings, or to apply for funding to support materials and supplies like books, software, memberships, and so forth. An uniform application was publicized or published last week whereby an early torrent of applications were received but has since slowed to a trickle. Meanwhile, planning for BCC's second retreat is officially underway. The Professional Development Committee is targeting March 26th for this event. Then you get to determine. President Risa is also gearing up the Senate to address our classified hiring and prioritization process. This process seems to have had some traction in past years, but has not yet been least recently updated and formalized. BCC's Senate is looking forward to scheduling listening sessions with Chancellor Gilkerson. In regard to the Peralta Classified Senate, our first meeting of this calendar year is actually scheduled for this Thursday. However, the Senate had the opportunity to meet with the chancellor at the beginning of this month, where we discussed, among other things, challenges of classified participation in shared governance, where Chancellor Gilkerson is prepared to assist us on a number of fronts. We discussed the role of remote work at Peralta and generally agree that one sentence does not fit all, but that Zoom, Teams, and other tools have and will continue to play an instrumental part of our work life. We concluded our discussion with ways to increase interest and active participation in professional development, especially the PD. It is relatively new for us as classified staff and a work in progress. One idea that was brought forward is to organize a district-wide summer symposium where staff can be brought together under one roof or perhaps multiple roofs to move this important matter of professional development forward by the masses or the masses. Somehow, we need to create professional development into the fabric of our Peralta existence beyond IEPI and with the backing of the Professional Learning Center. So please stay tuned for updates and perhaps invitations as special guests and/or presenters. The Classified Senate very much looks forward to continuing our meetings with Board of Trustee members, which are typically scheduled now for the last Thursday of the month. We are slated to meet with Board President Brito Gonzalez at the end of February. We are also planning to have student trustees, Massand and Vasquez, and all of the remaining trustees, hopefully by the beginning of the summer. And that concludes the Classified Senate Report. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. We move on to 3.10, District Academic Senate Report. To Goldstein.
Hey folks, Matthew Goldstein, President of the District Academic Senate. Thanks for having me on tonight's agenda. I'll keep it tight, I promise, tonight. First, at the risk of losing my composure right off the bat, I feel compelled to note the February 6th passing of our colleague and friend, Mary Shaughnessy. There'll be formal and and official recognitions and tributes and memorials coming down the pike, but I would be remiss in my duties as a rep of the faculty and a friend of Mary's not to mention her tonight and to say that we loved her dearly and we miss her terribly already. So the rest will seem trivial, but as I say, we can expect more formal tributes and memorials in the days to come. I'd like to update the board on the upcoming retreat for the district's Planning and Budgeting Integration Model. This is something that you've heard me harping about for months, going on years. Chancellor Gilkerson has led some discussions about how to approach that session. It's now calendared for Friday, March 22nd, and it will be focused on developing kind of a philosophical understanding of what we're after when we pursue participatory governance decision-making. So we can look forward to that happening on March 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00, and I'm sure more details will be forthcoming. I should note, too, that we agreed to address the particular, sort of the concrete, practical dimensions of shared governance after we've laid that philosophical foundation. So we can look forward to a, again, formal consideration of those concrete details that, to a number of us, are very important, but the first go will be this philosophical discussion of what we want from the shared governance process. Finally, just a quick preview of coming DAS activities. The effort to get our district to move away from carceral language, that is, kind of prison language, is underway at the DAS and across the district and indeed across the Bay Area and the state. BCC Councilor Gabrielle Martinez, who's also the VP of the BCC Academic Senate, is leading that effort in conjunction with students and faculty. And we will push that effort forward through DAS, and you'll certainly be hearing more of that. The kind of the most obvious glaring example of that is the use of the word probation and talking about folks who face academic challenges. So Counselor Martinez and his team will be bringing that to the board in the days to come. Also, folks should know that DAS is preparing for the spring plenary session in April happily. It's in Northern California this year, so that's more convenient for those of us who will make that trip. And I just wanted to alert the board to what's likely to be a number of resolutions and formal proposals coming down the pike in the months ahead. So it's something for the board to look forward to. Thanks for your time and thanks for having me on the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Goldstein. We're going to move back to item 3.8 for a report from Berkeley City College President Glitschow.
Hello, everyone. So sorry I'm late. I'll make my report now. So ASPCC met on February 8th last week. Last week, no major items were discussed. However, in the previous week's meeting, so on February 4th, we approved four representatives from Berkeley City College to four Peralta District Committees, which are District Facilities, District Technology Educational Services, and Holistic Safety and Wellness Advisory Committees. So yeah, it's great that we have four new representatives on the district level for those committees. And then applications for ASPCC for the 2024 to 25 academic year came out last week, and they close on the 27th. And this year, we're seeing a much more interest in student government compared to last year. There's a lot of people asking when the application comes out, when it closes, how voting, where it's all of that. So the scene for student government is great and has increased tremendously at Berkeley City College over the past year, and I'm very glad to see that. So stay tuned for that. Also, for an event that happened last week or two weeks ago at Berkeley City College, was Club Rush. So although 24 chartered clubs here on campus chartered in our atrium, and yeah, it was a wonderful event for students to look at all the different clubs, BCC offers, gauge their interests and and stuff like that. So it was a great event for student engagement and probably one of our most packed events of the year. And yeah, that concludes my report. Thank you all. Sorry again for my lateness.
Thank you. That will move to item 3.11, Public Communication.
There are two public comments tonight. First from Jennifer Shinowski and followed by Jeff Sincere.
Is this Anna? Good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson and Board. In case you don't remember me, my name's Jennifer, or you don't know me. My name's Jennifer Shinowski. I'm the past president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, and I'm a current chemistry faculty member at Merritt College. I decided to come today to share with you my experience of being a faculty member who left the classroom for seven years and now is back. My class is amazing. They are ready to learn. They come in excited and engaged every day. They ask great questions, and I'm really optimistic that it's going to be a great semester. We have our first test on Thursday, so we'll see how they feel after that. But I am facing many, many issues as a faculty member at Merritt this semester. For example, many of the doors are not unlocked. We have part-time faculty who come into my classroom asking me to open doors, and often the keys get stuck because the locks don't work or they can't, they haven't been able to procure keys on their own. When you call dispatch, you have to just then wait for dispatch to show up with a room full of, classroom full of students in the hallway waiting with you, wasting precious class time. When you call, the people that answer the phone are not very nice. They're not very helpful. When you ask them how long it may be, they answer with curt response, like, we'll be right there, ma'am. At least I have an office to go to. I just found out that there's a faculty member who has tenure but still is waiting for an office. I can't get copies made on campus because production is really unreliable, so I just go to the copy center near my house and make the copies myself. And I already know what the district will say if I ask for reimbursement, so I just pay for those out of pocket. When I walk in every morning, half the doors at the S building are locked. If I find the right ones, I can get in the building, and there's a beeping noise going off that was going off seven years ago. And I'm pretty sure people have just stopped hearing it. I couldn't believe it was still going on. None of the elevators work, and my class is on the fourth floor. It's not a problem for me, but it's certainly a problem for the biology instructor who's on crutches hobbling upstairs every day. He does it because he doesn't want to inconvenience the district. We have no hazardous waste disposal, so it's been piling up in the laboratory for years. The room pressure remains out of balance, a problem that we had about 10 years ago, so our fume hoods don't work. This was reported and remains a problem. We have ceiling tiles falling down in the building, and the building is not routinely cleaned. My trash can hasn't been emptied since I started this semester, not in 2007. My trash can hasn't been emptied since I started this semester, not in 2007. But back to my students. My class is great. My class is full. My class was full by the first week after it opened, and the waitlist was full by December 1st. My students showed up, the full roster showed up the first day, along with 20 extra students trying to crash the class, many in tears because this was the third or fourth time they tried to take Chem 1A, a basic chemistry class in Peralta. I don't know if you remember my little presentation on cutting FTF and what it would do to our programs, but chemistry is a case in point. I had to turn so many of those students away, even though I over-enrolled my class despite safety concerns in the laboratory. My department has no lab technician. We're missing a full-time Ochem instructor after three failed searches, and therefore we've had to cancel full classes. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that are slowly just becoming obsolete in that building. But I'm really lucky, and I know I'm really lucky because I have some great staff, some great faculty, and some great administrators at Merritt College. I'm really grateful to Kinga, who is our biology lab technician, who stepped right in to support the chemistry program. I'm really grateful to VPI Cook, who found out about the problems with obsolete and out-of-date materials and swooped in to find us a budget and the resources we needed to do that. And I'm really grateful for President Johnson, who always is willing to lend an ear when I'm frustrated and help to strategize solutions. So why am I here telling you all this? I'm here because I'm really shocked at just how bad things are in our classrooms on the ground. I'm shocked that so many things that were in place seven or eight years ago are still in place now. They haven't been fixed. We have to prioritize our students. We have to prioritize our classrooms. We have to prioritize education. I'm optimistic. I'm always optimistic. I know Mark is like, "Shut up. Your time is up." So please make sure that students really do come first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Sensory.
Every time. Hello, Board and, you know, administrators, Chancellor, folks, Presidents, VPIs, VPSSs. Everyone, I'm Jeff from PFT, the current president. I'll be brief, but I have three things basically, and they'll just be really, really quick, and they're not going to be unfamiliar to you. The first is facilities, specifically the elevators being out of service on three campuses, if I'm not mistaken, in some way, shape, or form. Classes are being postponed because of this. Some of the things that Jennifer spoke about are still happening. And they're doing this, then there's workarounds to avoid the obvious ADA violations, but sometimes those workarounds are still difficult for our faculty, especially the ones that are still disabled. So between classes being postponed and access to classes being difficult, but apparently still legal, still legal. So I don't think we have to go very far to understand why our enrollment numbers are recovering so slowly. Right now, it's not necessarily a terrific place to come back to, despite the wonderful teachers we have and even the wonderful administrators that we have on our campuses. The second thing that I hear, that I'm hearing from folks from my faculty are that there are different levels of mystery concerning why classes are getting canceled and why students are being overloaded into existing classes. The processes, how it happens, seems to vary from district to district and even person to person. And I think that for each college, it might be a case of, in the excitement to reach that that antiquated and problematic 17.5 productivity number, we're hurting our students and putting them in overfield classes or leaving students with no classes at all when they refuse to offer another course. Lastly, I'm here to call, this is kind of my little hobby horse. I'm here to call for an end to the rather insulting assertion that the reason we're cutting faculty and classes has to do with the 7% color rates. Sure, it's an argument that's easy to say to people. It rolls off the tongue very nicely. It kind of makes sense when you hear it. And it's most often actually heard when larger corporations give workers a raise. They're the ones that use this very, very common trope that we made this cut, or we gave you this raise, and that's why we're having to cut all this other stuff. It's very, very common in working class circles for working people. And it's not an argument that really stands up to any scrutiny. And my hope is, is that management and you kind of people on the DAS are educated enough in our budget, our finances, and our priorities to avoid this trope and identify it for what it is as an excuse. So my ask is, please don't repeat that. That's all I have, except for I hope that you guys adjourn with a moment of silence for Mary Shaughnessy.
Thank you. I think that was our last final comment. Yep. And with that, we'll move to the Chancellor's Report.
Thank you, President Gonzalez Brito. First, start with the reports from our college presidents, and I'm going to call on Dr. David Johnson first for Merritt College. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson, President Gonzalez Brito, Board, colleagues, and community. Since you have my Board Report, which highlights, number one, our efforts to connect middle school students from the Fruitvale to our campus in general and our landscape horticulture program in particular, two, our campaign to get every single instructor to utilize open educational resources and zero-cost textbooks, and three, a transfer partnership event with UCSD that was set for this Thursday with the three other campuses, but unforeseen circumstances mean we're going to have to forestall that. I just want to spend a few minutes briefly highlighting three items that are on the consent agenda that pertain to Merritt. First, we would appreciate the Board Trustees' support of Merritt and actually Laney's Children's Centers by allowing us to accept the $435,000 from the City of Oakland Head Start Program. Our students identify lack of childcare as one of the greatest challenges to continuing their education. And while we know the Children's Center and this funding, this is not going to meet all of our needs, but it is. It provides for a model and a foundation upon which we can build. And at Merritt, the opening of our $40 million child development, early childhood education building will move us closer to this goal as well. Second, I wanted to thank the Board of Trustees for the funding that it has approved thus far and hopefully will continue to approve to support Merritt's free breakfast program. Inspired by the Black Panther Party's efforts to feed the community in the 1960s and 70s and meant to address the food insecurity and economic challenges exacerbated by the pandemic, we, for the past several semesters, we've given our students who've registered free breakfast. And for the spring semester, we're extending that program to provide a lunch option. And I can share with you with the meals that we've provided our students have made a difference in students' lives. And actually, it's also made a difference in campus student life in terms of bringing people back and creating the type of community that we want to engender on our campuses. So we're grateful for your support in that respect. And finally, Ames College Preparatory High School, they're seeking to offer dual enrollment classes through Peralta by entering into a college and career access pathway, CCAP, agreement. And aside from the general benefits that we know accrue from such a partnership, students getting access to higher ed and the colleges growing our enrollment and creating potential pipelines to our campuses, I would like to point out that Ames plans to actually physically operate on Merritt's campus starting in the fall. So as such, approving the CCAP agreement would be ideal for the students who are already in our classrooms and walking our hallways. And we'd be extremely pleased to teach them. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Now, Dr. Besikov for Laney College.
Good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson, Board President Gonzalez Brito, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, and of course, our valued students and community members. Just wanted to first begin by extending appreciation to our district colleagues, especially in District General Services, as we continue to navigate challenges, both expected and especially the ones over the past couple of weeks unexpected, especially as we work to bring our elevators back online. Certainly appreciate the ongoing collaboration and efforts on the campus front with the things that we're encountering. Anticipating this possibly happening at the beginning of the semester, we came together, worked on a number of Plan B situations for alternate work locations, and really want to express my appreciation to our students and our employees, really just for being flexible during this time as we work through this, and just appreciate the continued focus on our students and their success. Speaking of students, just a brief enrollment report. As of today compared to a year ago, we are still up 5%. And we're excited because this week began a number of classes that will be 14 weeks in length. Those are our higher unit classes, biology, chemistry, first semester language, things like that. And then we're also looking forward to March 11th and 18th, when we run our half-term classes, which are always popular with the close of the school year. And we'll be promoting those with a spring festival that really has become commonplace each halfway point of the semester, just to promote campus life as well as our classes. Highlighting our Board Report tonight, there is an item for Laney that I would like to bring to your attention. The vendor is instrumental. This is a long time coming with work on our website, and actually, I think possibly still in the audience is Professor Lanny Gastis, who with Professor Susan Tim Ross Avala really led a lot of our efforts around guided pathways. And one of the things that came up as a concern was the appearance of our website and a lot of the work we're doing. This vendor really represents a collaboration of source, not only with Executive Director Mark Johnson's office, but also my colleague to my left at Berkeley City College. As instrumental, it will be the common platform in a lot of those areas and really wanting to make that experience great for students in Peralta as we move forward. So just, it's an exciting time. It's based in data and also synergy, and I'm excited about that. Also excited about our colleague, Classified Senate President, Ms. Hope Lane, who made a statewide presentation this past Friday on cracking, it was entitled "Cracking the Code." We were so excited about it at Laney that we actually hosted a viewing party with pizza provided by the administrative team. And there were about 40 people that turned out in the bistro on Friday to watch it, and it was pretty exciting. Also exciting, you know, it's great to put the spotlight on our classified professionals, but I also want to put the spotlight on our faculty for a moment as well. On my podcast, I always talk about partners of Laney or external partners, and one has been Tesla. And one thing that's exciting about this partnership is that we have eight students who have full-time jobs with Tesla now through this program and are also taking classes in machine technology toward a certificate. And it's just, it's really an exciting opportunity that shows education and industry getting together to do great things. And I want to express special appreciation to Department Chair Adam Balog as well as Professor Peter On for this incredible effort. And in closing my report tonight, it's a little bit, a few mixed emotions, but I want to express special appreciation to Ms. Arlene Lontak, who is transitioning over to Human Resources to take an executive assistant role. My, kind of my story as president began as Arlene began hers as the executive assistant to the president, and she's just done incredible service to Laney and certainly our entire college wishes her the very best. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Besikov. I'll now move to Dr. Denise Richardson for Berkeley City College.
Good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson, Board President Gonzalez Brito, Trustees, colleagues, students, and members of the community. Last Thursday afternoon, Berkeley City College had a beautifully coordinated kickoff to our Black History Month and Lunar New Year celebrations. This is the first time that BCC has collaborated on these two cultural celebrations, and it is a nod to the close relationship that has been forged between Black Americans and Asian Americans since the early 19th century, when as immigrants and former slaves, they shared a struggle for equality and survival. Today, we had a presentation by the current Buffalo Soldiers, who represent the largest African-American motorcycle club in the country. They even brought their motorcycles with them into our atrium, so it was very exciting to see them. They shared the history of Buffalo Soldiers, who were United States Army regiments formed during the 19th century to serve on the American frontier. Interestingly, we learned that the name Buffalo Soldier was one that was given to them by Native Americans. We hope that you will join us for our remaining celebratory events. Last Thursday, BCC recorded its second episode of BCC Spotlight under the direction of our PIO, Tom Rizza, and our KGPC Radio General Manager, Felicia Bridges. This segment featured Ms. Ramona Butler, the coordinator of our EOPS Care Program. Ms. Butler did an amazing job sharing eligibility requirements and benefits for students by joining, for joining the program. What she didn't say, but what I have observed firsthand, is that her warmth and mentorship have cultivated a thriving, vibrant community among our EOPS Care students. That segment will air this Thursday at 2:00 p.m., and if you are a night owl, it will air again at 2:00 a.m. on Friday morning. I'd like to recognize some exciting things happening for some of our BCC administrators. On January 11th, 2024, Dr. A.B. Lee participated in the statewide Promising Practices Roundtable on AB 540 Self-Certification hosted by Immigrants Rising. There, Dr. Lee spoke about Peralta's practice of self-certification with the AB 540 affidavit as a practice to reduce barriers for students. Her focus was on rethinking challenging conventional barriers for students. Also, our Vice President of Student Services, Dr. Stacy Shears, was just elected to participate in the 2024 Wheelhouse Advancing Leaders Institute. So we are very proud of both Dean Lee and VP Shears. In our effort to highlight the invaluable contributions of our classified professionals, BCC has just initiated a monthly presidential recognition. Our first recipient of this award is Natalia Fedorova. Natalia has served in various roles at Berkeley City College over the last 10 years, and in her current role as Project Manager of Grants and Special Projects, she's provided tireless support this past year in developing robust work-based learning opportunities for our students. Natalia's tenacity and ingenuity has helped to provide paid internships for 34 students working at Berkeley Lawrence National Labs, UCSF Bayer Pharmaceuticals, and other enterprises such as KPFA. She also manages our grant-supported internship program and four California Apprenticeship Initiative grants. Without a doubt, Ms. Fedorova is a BCC jewel and embodies the spirit of BCC's mission, transforming lives one work-based learning opportunity at a time. Lastly, I would like to share that I've been attending Berkeley Rotary Club meetings on Wednesdays at noon. They have been very welcoming and are very excited to have a renewed relationship with Berkeley City College. At the last meeting I attended, Mayor Jesse Erglin delivered an inspiring and impactful speech that demonstrated a deep understanding of Berkeley's political challenges and highlighted his hope for a better way forward. He kept it real in a way that politicians rarely do these days. This concludes my report for Berkeley City College.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Now turn to Dr. Mildred Lewis, the Vice President of Student Services for College of Alameda, who's standing in for the college president tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson, Board President Gonzalez Brito, Trustees, and Community. On behalf of Dr. Byrami, I'm happy to share a lot of activities happening at College of Alameda. We continue to focus on our education master plans, ABCs, academic excellence, vegetarian competency, and community partnerships. We have our upcoming annual community partnership breakfast with over 230 partners who have been invited to attend. Currently, College of Alameda is also launching our mobile COA for spring 2024, and our community partners are encouraged to request application support, academic counseling for our distinguished academic programs, and financial aid application assistance for our incoming students. College of Alameda hosted our Free Enrollment Festival on Saturday, January 20th, to increase onboarding and class registration. We had an honorable turnout of 84 students, even with the inclement weather, to support enrollment at the college. Prior to January 20th, the Student Services and Instructional Deans led an Integrated Student Leadership Professional Development Institute. It was the first in a series of PD opportunities for student leaders on campus to learn about team building, office logistics, and customer service, and event and mobile College of Alameda training. Student workers from our Learning Resource Center, Puente, Accesso, our associated students of College of Alameda and the Welcome Center participated. And finally, I'd like to echo the sentiments of Dr. Goldstein and share that Mary Shaughnessy was a cherished member of College of Alameda family, and her dedication to our students And her dedication to our students, her genuine passion for her work, and her love for our community will be missed. Many of us have fond memories of her lively spirit and her enthusiasm for life. This concludes College of Alameda's report and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. So now I'm moved to the chancellor's report. So first, I want to thank our two student trustees for taking the time to meet with me. Recently, we had a really incredible conversation, looking at enveloping and creating more pathways for students to be involved on campus. And so I'm really looking forward to the work that we're doing together and look forward to our meeting in late February with more student leaders and interested students from the campuses and want to appreciate both of you for being out tabling at the campuses and really hearing from students directly and sharing that with me. We hosted a district service center team meeting on January 25th and I got to say it was pretty fun. It was a meet and greet. We had some music. I really want to thank. You could see some of the pictures there on the screen and I want to thank really the marketing public relations team, Angel in particular, for helping with the microphones and getting the sound and everything up to our custodial team for setting it up. And I have to tell you, there were so many new employees in our district office who had never even met each other before that it was such a lovely time. And I need to give a special shout out to Teshetta Henry for her incredible support, actually helping with the bingo that we did and all of the ways that we got to be introduced. And so I want to thank the District Service Center family and team for inviting me and welcoming to the district. I got to experience the very first PBC, PGC joint meeting and it was a barn burner. If you look at the pictures, you can tell by it. No, it was the worst picture you could get on Zoom of everybody and I thought I'd make a joke about it. It's not, I mean, look at me, I'm looking up into the thing, but that's basically what Mark Johnson could find. And so it is kind of funny, but I want to tell you, people were deeply engaged, even though this is not the best picture of all of them. But I want to thank again Nathaniel Jones, Kwanah Rollins, Tim Redberger, Matthew Goldstein, Teshetta Henry, who all co-chaired these areas, these important committees to begin that talk. And I won't repeat Dr. Goldstein's remarks about the work that we're going to be doing together going forward and look forward to the board hearing a report on the governor's proposal at the next meeting. Community engagement and advocacy, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I had the opportunity as the Chair of the CEO of Food and Affordability Task Force for the California Community Colleges to lead a legislative briefing in Sacramento in January. And I think Dr. Johnson's comments tonight were illustrative of what we really are experiencing statewide with the largest student report on student basic needs with over 66,000 students across the California Community Colleges. Were two out of every three students experience basic needs insecurity. Three out of five are housing insecure and about one in four are homeless. It was our real advocacy to make sure to thank the legislature for their support, but to continue getting that support going forward. And I want to thank the trustees who were there at the legislative conference as well, being engaged in that work. I also had the honor to be at the BB Memorial Cathedral, representing the Peralta Community College District. And our four outstanding colleges were thrilled to co-produce the Barbara Lee and Ellie Hugh Harris lecture series for the Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center and got to thank Dr. Roy Wilson for all his help. It was an honor to see the Honorable Ellie Hugh Harris in person and share a stage with him as well as State Attorney General Bonta, as he talked about sort of where do we go? Community or chaos? And I think it was a really important discussion for that time. And so appreciate that partnership and the ability to be there. You heard it already. I'm going to say it again. I had the opportunity to watch Hope Lane in action. And really I want to just illustrate that this was a statewide webinar. So this is a huge thing to have our Laney Classified Senate President representing leadership and what it looks like. And she really talked about this idea and ethic of coming together, that everybody needs to work collaboratively in order to move and support, you know, participatory governance and the work that we're doing on behalf of students. So I want to give Hope a shout out and you could see there she was with pretty incredible panelists from across the state. And this was sort of supported by the LIFT program and CSU Fullerton, who've supported many of our professionals, both classified and administrators, who've gone through the LIFT program and so grateful to them for that support. We were in the news in the Oakland side, want to just give a little shout out again to our students, leaders who took the time to actually talk with a reporter about free tuition at Peralta colleges and how it's having an impact on our students. I want to thank the colleges for their work collaboratively on this program and certainly to Board President Gonzalez Brito for taking the time to elevate the work that's being done and the impact particularly for our underrepresented student populations and how this program has worked. We certainly know that we need more federal and state support to support these types of programs, but grateful for the leadership of this board and our my colleagues across the way in making sure that students have access to our incredible campuses. And you see here the wishing tree. This was part of my professional development flex day. Welcome was our wishing tree. I want to thank College of Alameda and today Laney College for starting off the listening sessions that I've been doing. But there are many wishes on these trees. You're welcome to add them, but the wishes that I saw, some of these included new beginnings, dedication, ethics, staying in line with the industry, more social activities for employees, looking for talent from within, leading with love, accountability, the community garden, forgiveness, peace balance, and greater sense of community, authentic collaborations, and adopting a new district map where some of them, these weren't all of them. But I think it's just again illustrative of sort of where we are at this point in time. And as we head and embark in and celebrate the Lunar New Year, happy Tet to those and the incredible historical contributions, both today, it shouldn't just be one month, but of our Black History celebrations, I want to just honor the fact that we're in a time of being able to actualize, I think, many of the things that we're here and certainly incredibly committed to doing that and thank the colleagues who've spoken tonight from our senate leadership, the college presidents for their work. I also want to share with the Peralta community that I've placed the Executive Director of Public Safety, Tim Thomas, on leave pending his resignation from the position with the district. Mr. Thomas is dealing with two legal matters, one involving his work for the district and one personal to him. While on leave, Mr. Thomas can focus on these matters. I appreciate truly that Mr. Thomas joined the district at a time of great change in our public safety program and really am grateful to him. Amy Marshall, our Associate Director of Public Safety, will lead day-to-day operations of the public safety program and is available if there are any questions from the campuses. We are also continuing our partnership with Marina Security at each campus and the district office. In addition, we will be continuing the work of developing a robust public safety and wellness program. I look forward to working in partnership with our participatory governance groups and stakeholders as we develop a public safety program that reflects the values we hold as a district and supports the safety of our students, staff, and community at the Peralta colleges. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, Presidents, college presidents. So with that, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
That was trustee Delphine Polk with the second. Great. Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrosen here. Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quindlin?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move to our action items. 8.1, consider approval of the two-year term for a new student member of the Bond Measures Oversight Committee.
Move approval?
Second.
That was President Gonzalez Brito with the second.
Oh, Napoli.
Sorry, Napoli Bellarice, sorry. Thank you. Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quindlin?
Yes.
And trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion cast.
Right, congratulations to Cole Sexton on his appointment. All right, and we'll move to item 8.2, consider approval of Resolution Number 2324-113 to support the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program on the March 2024 ballot, Measure H.
Move approval? Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, just briefly, just people are aware, on the March ballot in Berkeley, we'll be asking, voters will be asked to reapprove the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program, which is a partial tax. It supports about 25% of the school district's budget and it's a it's a real impact to Peralta because a lot of our students come through these programs and are dual-enrolled in these programs and so forth. So this is not a new tax, it's a renewal of an existing partial tax measure that has been enormously successful. And so we're asking this board to endorse the measure and encourage voters, obviously, to get registered and cast a positive vote in favor of passing passage of Measure H.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quindlin?
Yes.
And trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So that's the last of our action items and we'll move to Board of Trustees reports. Start to my right.
Wow, what a short agenda. This has been a wonderful couple of weeks. We had a board retreat, as you all know, which was really wonderful. Lots of exciting stuff ahead of us and the weekend before that, was it the weekend before that? Myself with a few of my colleagues were at the CCLC conference for the CEO Effective Trustee Workshop. And it was great to have almost a full table of our trustees, which was really wonderful. But additionally, both Dr. Jay and I were, we had two speaking engagements. One was that we did the advanced chair workshop or the beginning chair workshop. And then we were the panelists with the Los Rios President and trustee on Sunday morning. And I just have to tell you that there was a time, and you all know this, there was a time when the mantra across the state was at least we're not Peralta. You all know that. And it was really wonderful to see everybody light up because they know that Peralta has changed its ways and it's growing and it's and it's headed in a fantastic direction and it's proven itself to be this amazing district that we all know it is, but now the state knows it is. And so it was just fabulous to be up there and talk about all the great things that are happening and all the work that we have ahead of us, but all that's to come. And of course, the state chancellor, Sonia, had presented Dr. Jackson with an award for the 35, 40 years? 35, 40 years that she's been an educator within the CCC. And she spoke specifically to being on the commission, seeing where Peralta was and again, watching with with great wonder and great enthusiasm as Peralta continued to rise and move forward. So I thought I would just share that with you all.
I'm going to pass right now, but I will associate myself with the previous remarks. Thank you.
Vice President Quin.
Yes, so I was able to go up to the conference in Sacramento and I attended a couple of workshops and one of them I heard some amazing stuff that our colleges are doing, our districts are doing around the state to meet housing needs and food needs for their for their students. They're exciting things. They range from big programs and big housing solutions to solutions that basically operated on the idea of one student at a time. Instead of maybe one big housing project, they had seven or eight or nine around the community that that house special groups of students. And all of it was encouraging and all of it was uplifting and hopefully we can start addressing those issues here.
Okay, so while I was not able to attend the Sacramento conference, I did go to the Washington DC conference, which I mentioned at the last board report. We were able to speak with either the actual senators or the staff members of Senator Padilla's office, Representative Lee, Senator Butler as well. And we made sure to bring up issues regarding Peralta's needs, surrounding fundraising, ensuring we still get Pell Grants, letting them know about housing and food insecurity, talking about veteran services and benefits and all the things. And so hopefully, you know, the ear, the ears were open and the things start to get noticed and done regarding that. This is the first step, right? And soon there's an election coming, so we'll probably do it again in January, but hopefully the message gets passed along. Secondly, I did want to say, I have to find the name, while I'm not a fan of reply all emails, this one, we have a Grammy winner, so I just wanted to point out Glenn Pearson. I know we all got the email saying congrats. I was happy to see everybody very happy for Glenn Pearson and the Alameda Music Department. And lastly, while I believe we touched on this a little bit, I wanted to shout out also again, Ramona Butler for her tidbits in the emails during Black History. It's interesting to read and she even highlights some local places like Marcus Books here in Oakland. So it's just interesting and thank you, Ms. Butler.
So I attended the CCLC and the ACCT conference. And so, you know, I won't add more to what our colleagues said in Sacramento, but it was really eye opening to be, I think we were in the same workshop, BP Quinlan, around student housing and different models of student housing from across the state. In that case, if it was Los Angeles CCD, so I've asked for additional information just out of curiosity about how they were able to get that off the ground. So I really liked the idea of providing housing for student parents too. That was one thing that they really highlighted as part of that workshop. Washington DC is really cold. So we had a really great time going, okay, you're a DC native, all right, I'm a California girl. But we had a really great time talking to folks. We had great setup with Jane, who was our lobbyist in DC. She was fantastic. And so elections matter. We're going to have a brand new US Senator and a brand new Congressperson. Next time we're in DC, so there's going to be more relationships that we need to forge in order to get additional federal resources. And that would include HSI funding. That was one thing that I specifically discussed with several of the offices to get additional resources for Hispanic serving institutions. So all that's federal. But it was a great learning experience, so I really want to thank Chancellor Gilkerson for helping us set that up. It was really fantastic. So thank you.
Student trustee Massand and I will be meeting with student leaders from the colleges later this month here at the chancellor's office to discuss the planning of listening sessions. Each college will hold in March, which students will co-host. We will present to them some project ideas we have, including a section on the district website that we plan to write on resources for student leaders, highlight student leader stories and why student leaders should get involved in participatory governance. Student trustee Massand and I will meet also met with Board President Gonzalez Brito and brainstormed some goals and projects for the remaining semester. And lastly, I had the pleasure of speaking with the Oakland Side Newsletter this month to discuss Peralta's free tuition program.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to start off with a thanks to Academic Senate President Dr. Goldstein. Because of his introduction, I was able to meet with Gabriel Martinez, the counselor at Berkeley City College, who's frontlining the Title V updates on destigmatizing academic probation language and processes for students. With BCC student Derek Carver and ASBCC President Christiane Klitschko, we discussed reworking the academic procedure with input from students, specifically those who are at we discussed reworking the academic procedure with input from students, specifically those who are at risk and who are being impacted by academic probation. So as mentioned, student trustee Vasquez and I were able to meet with Chancellor Gilkerson and plan a district-wide meeting for student leaders. This will likely be held on February 28. We hope to hear from Peralta students on how they got involved on campus and how we can build a better infrastructure to increase student participation across Peralta. Lastly, I wanted to announce that student government elections have opened. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much to add, other than that I was at the conference in Sacramento and appreciate the learning opportunity to be there and appreciate my meeting with student trustees and taking the time and walking me through their priorities, including participatory governance for students. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vice President Quinlan to talk, walk us through announcements.
So the announcements for this evening are, number one, the spring semester is underway, but it's not too late to enroll. We have short-term classes starting in February and March. Spring is free for California residents to apply for financial aid and take six credits or more. Visit www.peralta.edu backslash enroll to start the enrollment process. Number two, Peralta Community College District celebrates Black History Month in February, and there are events happening at each of the colleges. Visit our websites for details. Number three, the Peralta Community College District will be closed Fridays, February 16, and observance of President Lincoln's birthday, and on Monday, February 19, and observance of President's Day. Enjoy the long holiday, four-day weekend.
Thank you, Vice President Quinlan. Before we conclude, we would like to honor the memory of our colleague Mary Shaughnessy, who passed away on February 6 after a long and courageous battle with thyroid cancer. Mary began her employment at Peralta 17 years ago as an academic counselor at College of Alameda. Long a champion of EOPS, Equal Opportunity Programs and Services, Mary had a huge impact helping to normalize the students and their families. The humor and wisdom she shared with students and colleagues is evident in a recording of her November victory at the Moth Grand Slam, a live storytelling event at the Castro Theater in San Francisco. Mary brought the crowd to its feet in her cancer story and deeper message about the transformative power of love and gratitude. She was beloved by her colleagues at COA and across the district. Our hearts go out to her husband Matt and sons Seamus and Milo. Let us now observe a moment of silence in our honor as we adjourn this meeting. Thank you. We are adjourned.